Tax assessment at the end of one year, and if they don't, then interest will be assessed going forward.
I think me and the clerk and I had this conversation, I believe it starts when she sends them the bill. Is that correct?
Thirty days.
Interest first day?
After thirty days.
After thirty days.
They can pay it off or then the, I think it's at eight percent, I want to say.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions on one thirty-one? All right, moving on, we'll have a first reading of twenty thirteen, one thirty-two.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the personnel policy manual by amending Article twelve, vacation leave, and creating a new section fourteen, fourteen, shared leave to assist employees with serious health conditions or events.
Mr. Hilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This event came out of, you all are already familiar with it, a couple of fairly terrible experiences some of our employees have had with some accidents and some illnesses. And in talking both to the council and staff, one, and really, it initially came up from our employees who just wanted to have a way to help. And what this policy would do would be to implement that. It would create a shared leave policy that would allow employees to donate vacation into a pool. And then if an employee, which does include spouses or children, would have a qualifying event, then the employee could, if, once they use up all their sick leave and vacation time, could draw from this pool to keep an income coming in. It is strictly for vacation time, does not have sick leave, and I think there's a good policy reason for that is because, you know, the employee doesn't really own their sick time. When we leave, you get a certain percentage of it over time, but vacation is an earned benefit and it can go back into the pool. The pool would be accounted for per dollar essentially, so, you know, the higher employee, the higher the wage employee, they would put in the pool at their rate, and a lower wage employee would put in at their rate. That's fair, I think, both to the upper and the lower incomes, because if I give to someone of lesser extent, then I'd like to make sure they get every dollar out of that. And from the city's perspective, you shouldn't have a person of lower income giving, say, an hour of vacation to someone at a higher income, because then they're giving a gift they don't have. We've got some rules and procedures on how the, how the policy would, would work. It's, it, just FYI, it terminates when someone becomes eligible for long-term disability, if it's an employee, or if they become social, if they start to receive social security disability, or they become eligible for lagers. Those are some of the, or if they get a return to work. And we did have a, kind of a spot at the end that said the city administrator can make deviations if necessary, essentially. There's going to be some situations right on the cusp, and we wanted to leave that open. This has no cost to the city itself, because it doesn't require any extra funds. The employees, the employee is already budgeted into the account, or into the budget each year, so there's enough money to pay that employee. Once the employee uses up their sick and vacation time, the money's still there. And in a way, it actually has the effect of encouraging your employees to actually work and perhaps get some better work out of them, because rather than taking that day of vacation, or that week of vacation, I'm actually going to donate that into the pool, and I'll be here, assuming it's better for me to be here than not, which is always debatable, I guess, but, assuming that's correct. So, I think this is a fair policy. Staff worked on it a little bit, and I apologize for not taking it through a committee. I kind of missed it going to the admin, which is where it should go. But we're still trying to put the finishing touches on it, but I didn't want to go ahead and take it to you now, because there's certainly an employee who's going to need it very, very soon, and you're all aware of that, so happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Drew, on one thirty-two? Bob?
You mentioned potential terminations. I would assume that if someone is eligible and they are drawing from this bank, if the bank were to become exhausted, it would terminate upon that condition, I would guess.
That's correct. It does, we do have a period for enrollment, a specific period. It's actually, we've got it set up for October first through the thirtieth, although, talking to Gail, we might come back with amendment to shorten that up a little bit. But it also allows the city administrator basically to put out a call, you know, if there's, if it becomes, if the bank's exhausted, and there's an event, maybe some people would donate at a special time. But we wanted to have a specific time period, so the, whoever's administrating this will not have to worry about it all year long and kind of prepare themselves and do it once, during one period of time.
And when does long-term disability begin?
Ninety days.
In ninety days?
Ninety days after the event. Oh, I should add, we do have a thirty-day minimum period, so they have to be out thirty days before it kicks in. We want it to be for major events, not, you know, minor, two- or three-week illnesses.
One other question?
Bob, go ahead.
What, what if someone has, maybe they're not a long-term employee, so they haven't, they don't have very much in their personal bank, and, and they, their sick leave and their personal vacation will not bridge thirty days? Is there, that would just be a period of time with no income?
That's correct. I mean, this policy probably benefits that type of employee the most, because presumably, you're here longer, you'll have accrued more vacation than sick leave, although certainly people have events that bring those down. But yes, that's correct. There is a pocket of thirty days that the employee's going to be on their own.
Okay. Any other questions on one thirty-two? Drew, I want to thank you. I know the FOP had a lot to do with this, obviously, a lot of countless city employees. I know Mr. Betts had a lot to do with bringing this forward. Appreciate all your work so far, and hopefully, we can get this to the goalposts, so to speak, here in the next week or two. Okay, next, we're going to bills introduced. We'll have first, excuse me, third reading of twenty-one thirteen, one twenty-two. Mr. Henry?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ed Williams, I think he was wanting to get on number ten for presentations from the gallery.
Oh, okay.
And forgot to get his name on that list.
No problem, Mr. Williams. I tell you what, we're, we're at fourteen now. Why don't we go back to number, is it number ten, Larry? Why don't we go back to number ten, Mr. Williams? Sorry, did not mean to leave you off at all. Per number ten, you have ten minutes, or, excuse me, five minutes. Please give us your name and address, and welcome tonight, and sorry for any confusion.
My name is Ed Williams. I live at forty-nine twenty Shepherd Hills Road in Jefferson City, and I'm speaking opposed to the Capitol Mall TIF presentation. I only have five minutes, so I'm going to get right to the, right to the subject here. This proposal is a lot like this sandwich. Looks good, doesn't it? You know where it came from. Whoa, there's something missing. Where's the beef? There's a lot that can be said about the Capitol Mall TIF proposal, and I'm going to have to hurry through it and depend on some of you to bring up some of the other questions. First, the TIF commission hearing that I attended was an absolute unequivocal joke. Ellinger did his very best to rush that through. I had several questions, and that's what the hearing, so-called, consisted of. Me asking questions, and Helger trying his best to answer them or overcome them. I'm not sure, maybe the man was on drugs, because his answers were unrelated to my questions. I think he was just trying to mislead and push me off. Do you, do you think? I think so. I noticed we're only about half dozen people there, maybe a few more. None of you were there. Wonder why? There was a committee meeting across the hall. Coincidence? I think not. I think that meet, those meetings were put in conflict to prevent anyone, any of you especially, coming to Mark Ellinger's kangaroo court. I think that's devious and dishonest, as was Mark Ellinger's hearing. The city manager was asked at last council meeting, what percentage of the sales tax comes from the mall? He said nine percent. Of course, that's not true. Any reasonable person who spends any time at the mall knows that the mall, and I'm talking about the mall, with Sears and Pennies and Dillard's, does not present, present nine percent of anything. That, his nine percent includes the Hy-Vee, Hy-Vee Gas, Capitol Mall, Capitol Theater, Hardee's, Pizza Hut, Wendy's. That was simply misleading in order to inflate the amount of tax money that appeared to be coming from the mall. If it's such a good proposal, why does everybody have to be dishonest? Why can't you do it face-to-face, like an adult, present the facts, and not try to mislead everybody? How many times have I heard this in the last week or so? Half of something is better than nothing. And of course, we're referring to the half of the sales tax, or half of the property tax that, property tax increase. Well, I've got news for you. Hundred percent is better than fifty percent. This line of thinking assumes that the mall property will not increase a cent unless it has a TIF. Ridiculous. No wonder the city's in financial trouble with thinking like this. Land increases in value. My own personal property, my little humble property, has increased over twice, the value has increased over twice the amount that I've paid for it, and I'm talking about assessed value. That's very valuable property there, and it's going to increase whatever is done to it, or nothing. Now, I know enough about business to know that the Farmer Brothers are not going to let that thing sit there. They're not going to let the mall close, because they have eleven million dollars put in it. Now, they want thirty million plus fifteen million rebate from the city, from the taxpayers. That's crazy. You pay your taxes, property taxes, these people pay theirs, I pay mine. Why should Farmer Brothers get it by? They seem to think that we owe them for their investments in the city. Lots of development around that area, and that property's going to increase in value, whether they do a good job or not. Mall business is very precarious. I hope they know what they're doing, because Sears could close tomorrow, J.C. Pennies could close tomorrow. That could be a disaster. I wouldn't invest in it. I bet you wouldn't. And the taxpayer shouldn't either. Now, every economic indicator in this country is up. Is there a day goes by that the governor doesn't make an additional proposal to spend money? I'm sure you keep up with that. The finances of Jefferson City will get better. Some of you are really, well, you're whining about your problems giving, giving all the services. Well, you're going to have to get some backbone, either propose a tax increase, or tell people, you just can't do it right now. It, it very, it shouldn't be very long. Look at the stock market, record highs. Thomas Jefferson, or, excuse me.
Mr. Williams, for the, for the record, you're coming up on six minutes.
Okay, I got about that much to go. Abraham Lincoln said he didn't have any trouble making decisions. He just got off the corner and decided what did the most good for the most people. The people you need to represent are your constituents and not the special interests. We know who's going to gain from the TIF. And I have nothing against the Farmer Brothers. I hope they're very successful with the mall. I don't think they will be. But you should represent your constituents and not any special interest. Do you have any questions for me? Anything to say to me? Any names to call me? Well, I guess you agree with everything I say, then?
Actually, Mr. Williams, I want to take this time as the mayor to thank you for coming forward tonight. You had not signed up before to speak, and as, as a courtesy, I think you talked to Mr. Henry and allowed you to have your time here tonight, and I appreciate you taking the time to come here and speak your piece.
Thank you.
Are there any questions at all for Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir.
You asked for a comment, and you made a comment that you hope, you hope that they know what they're doing. And we've had some, some meetings with them, and if it's any assurance at all, I can tell you that I get the impression that they really know what they're doing out there.
Well, how about?
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm not debating with you or question and answer, but I, I just want to give you some assurance. I hope that, that I do believe, and I think we do, believe that we're acting in the best interest of the community. And, and the farmer holding has, has, makes some very impressive presentations.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
Very impressive presentations.
Did they mention in any of those?
Tell you, thank you.
Where this has been done before, any, any malls taken and remodeled and been successful?
I'm.
I'm sure this is probably the only one in history, Mr. Williams.
I bet that's probably right.
I did not mean to get into a question.
Drew, do you have any other questions for our guest?
I don't. I'm glad to address some of these things when, when time comes.
Okay, another time, all right, great. Well, you're excused. Thank you very much for being here tonight. At this point in time, is there anyone else under number ten that might want to speak this evening? Going once, going twice, three times? All right, where were we? Oh, thank you, fellas. Pending, we'll have third reading of twenty thirteen dash one twenty-two.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with George Butler Associates Incorporated for the Highway fifty-four and Stadium Boulevard interchange traffic study project.
Mr. Matt?
Thank you. As the clerk indicated, this is an engineering contract with George Butler and Associates. The first phase of it is this traffic study. As you might recall, this all ties back to our city-county improvement at the interchange, as well as the Capital Region Medical Center expansion. The contract is, is scheduled to be completed by the end of May, and the cost of it's one hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, and we'd recommend approval.
All right. Any questions on the council staff on twenty thirteen?
One twenty-two. Seeing none? Debate? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Turgen?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move into third reading of twenty thirteen dash one twenty-five.
An ordinance approving the Capitol Mall tax increment financing plan, designating a redevelopment area, declaring the proposed redevelopment area a blighted area, and designating Capitol Mall JCLLC as the developer of the redevelopment project.
Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to go over a couple of points. I know we've gone through this a lot, a lot of meetings on it, so I thought I'd hit the highlights of it again. The TIF plan covers in excess of thirty-five million dollars of improvements to the mall, of which twenty-five million dollars, I'm sorry, thirty-five million dollars of cost to the mall, twenty-five million dollars' worth of improvements. The developer seeks reimbursement of fifteen million dollars. That reimbursement comes out of the new growth. A baseline is set, a baseline of how much we receive for taxes is set prior to construction of these improvements. And so we'll know prior to the improvements how much sales tax we get, how much property tax we get. Each year for the next, up to the next twenty-three years, the developer and the city will split all new growth in the sales taxes over the baseline amount, which, in other words, the city won't receive any less taxes than it receives today. The risk is a hundred percent on the developer. There's no upfront payment by the city to the developer for these costs. They will front the money, make the improvements, and then, and only, and they will only get reimbursement if, in fact, there is growth in the tax base. The but-for test is the critical part of this test. The but-for test says that, and we've hired our own expert to determine this, completely obligated to us and nobody else, that but-for city incentives, taxpayer incentives, this project won't go forward. In other words, what that very simply means is the private marketplace would not invest in that mall to do these type of improvements, because it's not profitable enough. Certainly, if we do nothing, then we've proven nothing will happen. So, why do you, why do I think you should support this plan? You know, it's a piece of the puzzle. A vibrant mall brings new growth. It'll bring new stores that should complement, not deter from downtown. It's a compliment to the MSP tours. People come here, they'll have something more to do. It's a compliment to people who stay in our hotels, that while they're here, they can shop. It should bring in stores that many people want, that they might, in fact, leave town for. So, those are the, kind of the upside of it. Conversely, doing nothing, we've noticed the mall frankly has deteriorated, and there's no reason to doubt that it will continue to deteriorate. And certainly, as Mr. Williams pointed out, you can look at examples of malls that are blighted and continue to deteriorate, and are a lot of targets for redevelopments around, around the state. Conversely, I guess I disagree with Mr. Williams that there aren't success stories. You go around certainly any number of malls, and one I always think of is one on Manchester, it's just a mega mall in St. Louis, that's really been a tremendous benefit. You can just go thirty miles north of Columbia and see how vibrant their mall is and what kind of stores they get. People who are looking for those particular stores will leave Jefferson, Jefferson City and go up there and shop. It's those kind of target stores that benefit us the most as a city. Another question that comes up oftentimes is, are we giving tax dollars to the farmers? You know, you can say that it is, in my move, in my mind, is, it is an incentive for improvement. You know, we could do nothing, but again, the but-for test tells us that if we do nothing, nothing will happen, and it will continue to deteriorate. You know, this is really a one-sided deal to our benefit, and I'm, I'm sure the farmers feel that way a hundred percent, you know. You like to think this is a partnership, but really, you know, they're taking every ounce of the risk, and, and we get all the upside, or at least half the upside. There are, I had a question from councilman about how many jobs are actually with, inside this, inside the Capitol Mall itself. This is inside the Capitol Mall, not the outlots, and that's estimated about five hundred jobs from, from Capitol Mall folks. Mr. Williams is correct, it's not nine percent of our total budget comes from inside the mall. The TIF area is nine percent, and that does include some of those outlots. Inside the mall itself is about five percent of that, that nine percent, so better than half, about sixty percent. I'm not great at math. Property tax, Mr. Williams mentioned about property tax increasing. While I generally agree with that, as a principle, the mall itself decreased. In fact, the last issue in our mall TIF was the fact that when they first proposed the mall, they had, they were proposing the baseline set at the current, current property taxes amount. However, they went to the Board of Equalization who realized that the property value there had actually decreased. So, the baseline actually got set down a bit lower, which is a benefit to us, because it makes, as they grow more, that's more that gets paid back into the TIF. Agree a hundred percent about the, Mr. Williams' comment about the anchor stores closing. You know, we just saw, I think it was J.C. Pennies closed a thousand stores, and I was shocked and relieved that we weren't one of them. But I think a big risk at that particular mall is that if we don't, if they don't make it nicer and they don't improve it, and you don't get more business in there than those, all three of those anchor stores at risk to a degree, and, you know, we don't want to make it attractive to close an anchor store. The mall, the TIF, again, terminates in no more than twenty-three years. If it goes well, as many TIFs do, it'll pay off sooner. If it doesn't go well, then it'll go twenty-three years, and the farmers will have accepted all the risk, and the city won't be out to anything. I guess Mr. Williams talked about a hundred percent is better than, than nothing, and that's true. Certainly, if, if we were to believe that there would be growth and that there would be investment to improve it, that a hundred percent would be better than that. But again, we hired our own expert, who has their obligation to us, that said that but-for these incentives, that won't happen. You know, staff is in favor of this proposal. We believe, you know, we had some hard negotiations, and, and, you know, each side gave, and we think that we're, the city is well protected, both on the upside and the downside. You know, if, if it goes super well, then they're going to pay back an even higher percentage back to the, pay down the TIF. The developers never get more than they've put in, and city staff's in favor of this and believes that it's, benefits the city as a whole, and just another way of saying it is the most good for the most people. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Bray?
It's a fifty percent TIF, right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Just for the audience at home, fifty percent means that whatever the growth is at the mall, we will, the city will receive fifty percent of that, and fifty, the other fifty percent will go into a special allocation fund, which then pays back the developer for their actual costs.
So, if my daughters are watching, if they got an Abbot Cumbery store out there, then that added revenue would go towards the city?
Yep, fifty percent.
And it would also cost me.
That's true.
Because.
Sure, it'll be more than fifty percent of your revenue going to.
Ken?
Just a quick point of clarification, Drew, and I think I know the answer to this, but you made the comment, obviously, the farmer holding companies does not receive tax dollars if there's not an increment. But this is also attached to a CID, which is a one percent. So, in reality, sales could stay flat at the mall initially, but with that one percent, that's incremental. That's considered an increment, correct? An increase?
Yes.
And so, in reality, right away, regardless of sales changing, there would be public tax dollars reimbursed back, correct?
Yes, assuming, assuming it doesn't go down a percent, you know, sales at the mall don't tank, that one percent wouldn't get over the baseline. But yes, you're correct, assuming it's flat, immediately, that one percent CID. The thing, kind of jump ahead, but it is complicated, but it's worth explaining. The CID, which I'll get to in a minute, is a one-cent tax. Because there's a TIF, one percent, or one-half of that one percent will be captured into the TIF. So, that.
And, and the, the holding company has agreed to contribute their half percent of the CID through the new?
Right.
To the project. So, in reality, the full one percent's getting contributed, whereas in a true increment, we would get a half.
Yes, yes. Well, I'll talk about, I want to talk about CID.
I know, they're intermingled.
They are indeed.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Bob?
I want to, I want to revisit that for a second. I had something else I want to ask, but I'm either misunderstanding what you're saying, Ken, or, or you're misunderstanding what he's saying, because the CID, the, the city won't get any of that, as I understand it, because normally, we would get half, but the way the TIF is written, the half that we would get from that is going to go toward paying the TIF. Is that, am I misunderstanding that?
Well, I, I think, I'm not sure.
Yes.
I think, if I'm correct on this, maybe Corb needs to jump in here. I think that a, a traditional CID without a TIF, just the CID, the one percent would go to the new body, the new sub, political subdivisions established. Since this is added to a TIF with a TIF, the entire one percent for twenty-three years is considered increment, increase. And so, therefore, it's treated like the fifty-fifty split, but in this instance, the fifty, fifty percent of that has not come into the city. Fifty percent is going to the new CID political subdivision that's been established, and that group, the holding company, has said, we will dedicate that for the first twenty-three years to the project, when in reality, they could hold back that fifty percent and dedicate it to whatever the CID, I think, political subdivision chose to, correct, Drew?
Yeah, that's right.
So, I guess what I, what I was trying to ask of Drew was, even if sale, even if sales tax revenues were flat, because you've added that one percent, right out of the box, there, there really is an increment, and so the TIF starts to pay back right away, regardless?
Yeah.
Of whether or not there's an increase. Because I think we all know it'll take a little bit of time for there to be an increase there.
Right, the tip, the, the money goes to the TIF. That's the only thing I want to make sure that people listening at home understand, is it goes to the TIF. None of it comes to the city of that one percent.
And you could have, and might have been the farmer's preference to leave the CID completely out of the TIF. Our preference is to keep it in, because it gives us more control exactly how that money gets spent.
The, the one thing that I want to point out here, that we, we're, this is the city's bill to approve. We're, we are the final approvers of the TIF, but we're not the only beneficiaries of the TIF. That, when, when we keep talking about the city getting half of the growth, well, so do all the other taxing entities in Cole County. And, and that's why they all serve, there's a representative from every one of them on the TIF commission. So, when they referred to Mr. Ellinger tonight, he was the chairman, that's true, and he is the, the presiding commissioner for Cole, Cole County. But there was also the superintendent of schools on that TIF commission, representing the school district. There was someone from the library board. I'm not sure, and I'm not going to try to name everyone who's on the, the commission, but I do know that representatives of those taxing jurisdictions are representatives of that, on that commission, and they were there to represent the interest of their individual taxing jurisdictions, and they represented them by saying, yes, we think this is a good thing. and they represented them by saying, yes, we think this is a good thing, and they voted unanimously to pass it. So it's not just the city who stands to gain from this TIF, it is the citizens of Coal County and the citizens of Jefferson City who are part of Coal County. And so I just want to make sure that we don't leave those other jurisdictions out of the mix.
And the way it's set up by state statute is that all the taxing jurisdictions who are affected by it are part of that board, so I think there are two county, two school, and then one everybody else, which just happens to be the library board here, and then six representatives appointed by the city.
That's split between the city and county, right? The other representations, the volunteers, is that split between county and city?
Two county, two school board, one library district or every other one, and then six cities, six city points.
All right, anything else? Carlos?
Just real quick, Drew, so let me get this right. So the city hired an attorney to look at this, the blighted area and all of that, and then there was a commission that was set up to also look at this TIF as well. So, and the risk is solely on the developer. And there's over five hundred jobs at Capitol Mall.
Well, that is correct, and I guess probably worth pointing out, again, we hired a, while I'm fairly knowledgeable about it, you know, we had somebody solely devoted to that, he was, he's an expert attorney in the field. We also hired an expert in economics of it. So we had two independent folks look at that, and part of our deal, as in the policy that we're not going to vote on tonight, but it's on the agenda, we did require that the developer provide us with sufficient funds to pay for that. There's no strings, they didn't get to pick who we picked, we picked who we wanted to, and the total obligation is to us, but that is to protect the city and protect the taxpayer to make sure that their numbers are correct and the things, and that this process is done correctly.
And after twenty-three years, then this TIF expires?
It expires and goes away whether they've been paid in full or not. If they get paid in full on their costs, then it'll end sooner.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on 125? Mr. Henry?
Drew, to further break that percentage down, I know you mentioned five percent inside the mall. What's Hy-Vee's contribution to that, and if I'm not mistaken, are they on board with this?
They are on board with it. We're not allowed to actually disclose what percentage, what amounts. Department of Revenue makes a sign-in agreement, in fact, Betts and Sheila, I think, are the only ones actually get to see it right now, of actual amount, numbers that are paid, and because you all could look at how much is paid in total, you could probably backtrack it if I told you the percentage that Hy-Vee paid, Hy-Vee is a majority of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Prather?
We've heard off and on about the potential increase in the sales tax revenues. Can you speak a little bit more, you had mentioned that five hundred jobs are out there, is there potentially increased those jobs?
Absolutely, I mean, certainly the goal of the developers is in fact to fill up the mall, which would add more stores and more jobs. Now, you know, they're not probably all going to be top-end jobs, certainly, but a job is a job, so we're excited to have any of them. But absolutely, the point of this is to make the mall better, to bring more stores in and fill that thing up, increase our, increase the stores, increase the taxes that are paid, allow the city to maintain services or cut taxes, wherever you decide to do that extra
I think one, one thing that we have to keep in mind here, everyone, is that, you know, I remember doing the quick math, three, three and a half years ago, I was on a radio show and someone called in as I was running for mayor, and they said, so, what are you going to do to save the mall? And I'm thinking to myself, well, it's owned by General Growth, there's really not a lot we can do. I guess a bunch of us could have banded together and tried to buy it, but I didn't really see that as an option. I think a clear choice is, are these types of incentives, not just for, not just for this mall, but for, but for things like O'Donohue's, which was one of our first TIFs, is that correct, Drew? And what's taking place down on East Dunkland? When you have an older city like Jefferson City, I think these TIFs give us an opportunity to reinvest in ourselves, and we have to remember, the people that drive through Jefferson City to go to Columbia, St. Louis, and Kansas City to shop could very easily stop here. Any other questions on the TIF? Carrie?
Are we doing debate as well, or just questions?
It kind of sounds like we've been doing a little bit of everything, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. And I completely agree with what you just said, I think the mall has this potential that's just sitting there, and we finally have the opportunity, and when I ran for council six years ago, that was the question, what are you going to do with the mall? And I'm sure that all ten of us sitting here have been asked that repeatedly, and we've never had a chance like this and an opportunity to actually do something. Being a business owner myself in the retail field, I know that the retail climate is very healthy in Jefferson City. If you have the right mix and the right thing that customers want, the right location, the right stores, the right climate there, and I think that with the new ownership of the mall, we finally have somebody who's willing to take that chance. And people have said to me, well, you have a business, if you want to fix your roof, you fix it, you don't go to the city. But I look at, each situation is different. The mall is a completely unique area and situation. It's different than downtown, it's different from every retail area in our community, and so I'm trying to separate some of the, I think, some of the comments I'm getting, people like to compare downtown and the mall, or compare different areas or different situations, but what we have with the mall is completely unique and different, and we're handling it in a, in a new, unique way for our city, but it's a good way because we have all of the right people coming together, the right people who bought the mall who are willing to, to do something about it finally. And the description that Drew gave is excellent because it is new growth, and some of the comments and confusion I've received is thinking that we are giving something away, but what we're truly doing is establishing the new growth, so we still are getting what we would continue to be getting. One thing I would like to see as, as we continue down this road, though, are making sure that infrastructure improvements around the area are addressed. I know Country Club Drive has no shoulder, it's something we've talked about for years. Our goal is this mall would bring a lot more customers and people to the area, so as that happens, we are going to need to look at the street lighting around the mall, right in front of Country Club Drive, but also the shoulder situation that's already in need of repair regardless of what happens today. And the CID, which I know is the next bill, I'll just talk to that briefly now, so I don't have to talk again on that one, but I did have a couple concerns of people calling saying, well, I don't want to pay more if I go to the mall, and that we should do something about that, and I see that side of it. I know we've struggled with that, thinking about a downtown CID and have shied away from a sales tax CID for that reason. But what I would say is I wouldn't want the council to stand in the way of doing a CID because it, it really is the owners of this mall thinking it is worth the one percent for their customers, because whatever the outcome's going to be is going to be so much better that the people will be happy to pay the one percent and still shop there. And if they can show to their customers, and I think they will, and will have a way to do that, to say, yes, you're going to pay a little bit more, but you're going to get a lot more, and we've seen that with the two or three other CIDs that are currently in place, that, that do cost more, the CIDs and the TDDs, where the customers are paying more, but they get whatever service or location, or the streetlights, or sidewalks, or whatever it is that they really like, they're paying more for it, but they're willing to do that. And if the mall can do that and prove that, which I think they can, that shouldn't be too big of a hurdle to overcome. And I know on the conference center too, I know it is separate, I have had some confusion and phone calls, thinking that what we're doing tonight, this, this TIF is related to the conference center, and I think, you know, Drew addressed that, but that it is completely separate, so what happens tonight has no effect on that, on the conference center TIF. This is, so if we pass this tonight, has nothing to do with that at all. I'm in favor of this TIF, not in favor of the conference center TIF, but this, I think the potential is there, and I would also think differently if all of the reps, like you mentioned, Bob, Scrivener, were from the TIF Commission, they unanimously want to see this, so I really feel that it's exciting. We have no opposition, all we have from them is encouragement, and I think that it is time. So it's exciting, we actually have this in front of us, and we can finally answer that question, we've all been asked for years about finally revitalizing that mall. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the, on the bill at hand, 2013-125, dealing with the TIF of the mall? Debate on 125? Yes, sir?
So Drew, so, so that everybody knows and understands, the TIF funds can only be used for what?
The, the money that's captured in the TIF can only be used for the cost outlined in the TIF plan. So, you know, roughly, we're talking about the parking, the roofs, the exterior and interior, they're going to turn some things out, so. It's more limited than CID, which I'll talk about now. And just, if I could use this opportunity to say, kind of confirm what Councilwoman Carol said, this has nothing to do with the conference center at all, that's a different discussion, and it would change the format of this if that's what you did.
Okay, any other debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2013-126.
An ordinance approving a petition for the establishment of the Capitol Mall Community Improvement District, including the appointment of the CID Board of Directors.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The CID is a one percent sales tax, we've already talked about that a little bit tonight. It is a user tax requested by the owners of the property. I understood perhaps Mr. Williams concerned about a Hancock Amendment violation, I'll tell you, that's, the court's not interpreted a CID as a violation of Hancock Amendment thus far. The CID that is not captured in the TIF, and again, we talked about that a little bit, is constrained by law as to what it can be used for, and it is governed by a board that is appointed from, the owners of the property, as well as the city got a representative on that, that the mayor is appointing, as part of this approval. You know, essentially, a TIF is for the construction and a CID is for the maintenance. So what the TIF gets you is you get to build, you make the improvements. What the CID allows you to do is maintain those improvements over a long period of time, and this is a forty-year CID. Again, you can certainly, the advantage of the user tax is that if you don't like it, you certainly don't have to shop there. We have not seen, you know, in the city that, so far, that that has been a deterrent, Eastside Walmart, but more appropriately, the Stone Ridge Developments at TDD. So you look at the Menards and the Coles, and, you know, all those things are really going gangbusters, really, so. Happy to answer any questions, I think we've covered a lot of ground on the first go-round.
Any questions for Drew on 126?
Correct me where and if I'm wrong on any of this, Drew. First of all, a, a sales tax by Missouri law is a tax on businesses, it's not a tax on consumers.
Correct.
Consumer, I mean, businesses can and do itemize the tax on the receipts because, well, for one thing, in the long run, it saves us money and it saves them money by itemizing them, because they point out that that's taxes that they're collecting to be remitted to the state. If they charged you ninety-five cents and five cents tax, then that is a ninety-five cent sale. If they charge you a dollar and then paid the tax out of the dollar on their own, they would have to pay taxes on a dollar, not on ninety-five cents, to the state of Missouri. So that's why businesses itemize tax on a, on a receipt. They, a CID is a development district or an improvement district, and, and to, the reason a, a CID, in my mind, is superior to just a loose agreement among the business owners out there that they will spend money to improve their property, when they, when we do a CID, they're actually making a commitment, they're making a commitment for forty years to take this money and spend it to keep their property improved. Some people have, have used as a basis for, for suggesting that I should vote against the TIF, is that we would spend the money to improve the mall, and then fifteen or twenty years from now, it would be in disrepair again, and we'd need to spend the money all over again. Well, the CID provides money to keep it up as we go along, which is, is something that you just said. One of the, one of the things that, that I, it makes me favor the CID, again, is this commitment from all of the businesses, it's not just the mall. Again, the Hy-Vee is on board, Wendy's is on board, Hardee's is on board, Pizza Hut is on board, because they see the value of maintaining that property and dedicating that money to keeping their, their properties improved. So I know there's been some concern on the part of some of us that forty years is a long time. I know there's been a concern that the idea that, that we're imposing this new tax, but I ask you to consider, what's the difference whether the, the business marks up their product one percent additional, so that they have the extra money to do these improvements, or if they dedicate one percent through a tax? The consumer still pays the same amount, you're still having one percent either way. The difference is, is that there is a commitment to spend that money on the repairs as opposed to taking that additional, some of the businesses taking that one percent as profit, and some of the businesses spending it on maintenance. If you have a down year and, and you're just have committed in your budget to spend the one percent, and you may, you may not spend it, whereas if it's dedicated funds, that's the only thing you can spend it on. So I'll, if you haven't already figured it out, I'll be voting yes on the CID.
And in fact, one step further on that is that it actually gives the city a bit more protection, you know, in the sense that our goal is the redevelopment, because the CID can only be used on certain, certain improvements, whereas the, if it were just an agreement among the owners, well, they could do it on whatever they want, which I think was your point, they could just put it to their bottom line if they wanted to.
Any other questions on 2013-126? Ken?
Drew, I just had a quick question. You said, we're establishing the initial Board of Directors, what's the, you said there's a city representative already on the initial board?
Yes.
Of the five, who is the designated city?
Ron Fitzwater.
Okay.
That's just an appointment by the...
And then the other four are selected?
Are, right, selected by the developers, owners of the property.
And then going forward, just for clarity's sake, what's, what will be the process, if you recall, for replacement of those?
You know, they're the two-year terms?
Yeah.
Oh, great, yeah. Yeah, there's two four-year terms and three two-year terms to start it off. That, it would, when our, when our appointee comes up, it'll be done just like all the other appoint, appointments, it'll just come up for the board to approve, I mean, for the council to approve, on a consent agenda, or appointments by the mayor, I guess.
Okay. Second question regarding the establishment of the tax, just for clarity's sake, this grants the authority to the board to set a sales tax to not increase, not exceed one percent. That board also, five years, ten years, twenty years, thirty years from now, could make a decision to then lower that tax?
Sure, yep.
And then once again, increase it, and so they have the flexibility to modify. For example, if they felt like the one percent put them at a competitive disadvantage, they may...
Sure. They could never go over one cent, because that's all that's authorized.
But they could make those changes without having to come back to the council for approval of that activity?
Yeah, I believe that is correct.
Okay. And then I guess, just to build on Bob's point, and, and I believe this may be the case already with a TDD, you talked about how the business could itemize things up, but also, it's a, it's a sales tax on businesses, and so the business could choose not to actually bill this one percent to the customer, but to, I mean, technically, they're paying the one percent, it's a matter of who they bill that to, and I believe there may be a sporting goods store in town that's within a TDD that opts to, to do that, and I'm getting some nods of agreement as well.
That is correct.
So it would be permissible for the stores within the mall to take that burden on and not pass it on to the customer?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or debate on 126? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have a third reading of 2013-127.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with New World Systems Corporation, New World, for software maintenance support services.
Mr. Betts?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is an eight-year contract with New World for software maintenance. This, we, we as a staff recommend that we approve this as a council... Uh, this, uh, we, uh, we as a staff recommend that we, uh, approve this as a council. Um, overall, it has saved the city about four hundred thousand dollars over the eight years, roughly fifty thousand dollars a year, um, in the maintenance if we do the eight-year contract over doing the current five-year contract that they've offered to us.
Any questions for Bill? Any debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray? Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody got that in? Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2013 one twenty-eight.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with New World Systems Corporation, New World, for the implementation of Mobile Ten Public Safety Software.
Bill?
Yes, this is for, uh, the mobile data software that's offered by New World. Uh, currently, uh, the city has mobile data terminals in their police cars, um, and, uh, we need to upgrade. We're on version seven. This would move us to version ten. Uh, the cost to the city is, uh, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, which will be paid out of sales tax E funding, uh, and staff does recommend approval of that.
Any questions on one twenty-eight? Debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next, we have on the informal calendar, uh, Bill 2013, uh, dash twenty. Uh, I understand, uh, that Drew, uh, you've talked to Mr. Shulte, and, um, for some other reasons, you'd like to possibly keep this on hold-
Yeah.
Uh, for just a little while?
If we could do it one more time. Uh, I did finally talk to the Board of Realtors, and they got their comments to me on Friday. I haven't had a chance to incorporate them, so if we can just hold that one more time, there's no rush on it.
Alright, council have a problem with that? If not, that will be on the informal calendar. I appreciate you taking care of that for, uh, Mr. Shulte while he's gone. Nothing under sixteen, nothing under seventeen, uh, any council or staff discussion or presentation topics? Carrie?
Um, I have a question about, I know earlier in the meeting, and I think it was under the committee reports with Councilman Scrivener, we were talking about the Transportation Committee that has kind of been, uh, the idea's been tossed around since about last April when we had our, our vote on, on the city bus service and possibly establishing something. And I guess the reason I bring it up, I know W.T. Edmondson mentioned the forum on Thursday night-
Mm-hmm.
That the council's invited to, and I know that'll be a topic of discussion, so I thought it might be nice to say, and I know, I think I know what you're saying, we, we still have a couple of big things ahead of us, such as Conference Center and City Administrator. And we want a new city administrator on board from the beginning of this process, and that I agree. But I don't want to convey the message either that it's not, uh, uh, important, and I know that's, that's not the case. It is important. So I know they're building momentum. They're going to have the meeting. How could we, um, present something, and this isn't a time for us to present Thursday night, but I know it's going to be a topic, so I just would like the council to be prepared.
I think, and I appreciate that, Carrie, and Bob, chime in any time, but Bob and I met with a lot of that leadership on, was it Thursday? It was Thursday morning after the brown bagel. And I think Bob and I both shared a lot of feelings of, of a lot of the council members that it is something we want to look at. Transit's a very im- important part of, of people's lives who, who ride that every day. And as a city, I think we see that, uh, in the past, uh, as we had, as we had told them last Thursday, there was a point in time last year during the budget cuts, we thought we were possibly going to have to do without the midday service. And, uh, obviously, we didn't have to do that, but that was a, uh, that was a service at, at the point, and at that point in time, they weren't riding that much. But I think the overall message that Bob and I tried to get to them is that we haven't forgotten, uh, we have some other things that are currently here, but hopefully in the, in the short time, we can get back with them and, and get to work with this. But I'd definitely like for our city administrator, our new city administrator, hopefully to be on board. Uh, because, uh, with however many years of experience he may have, I'm sure he can come to the table with a lot of good skills. Bob, would there be anything else you would add to that?
Uh, I would just say that, uh, actually, I've had two meetings within the last two months, uh, with, uh, uh, leaders of the, uh, Faith Voices Group. Uh, W.T. was in our meeting Thursday. Uh, Duell Sager's been in a couple of meetings, and so it, uh, I think we've communicated the position on it, and I would hope that, that, uh, they're comfortable, that they, that they know that we think that it's something important and something that we intend to move forward with, uh, really pretty short order. I, I don't know, uh, I think something was said about three weeks.
And they also, I think it was about thirty days roughly till our administrator gets on board. But they also gave us some ideas as far as what Columbia is currently doing and that kind of thing. So, uh, I think we're at a good starting point and look forward to it.
Would it be worth, um, maybe having city staff, like I would think Janice, although I know Janice is not the transit, or not the transit, who's the, would it be Matt Marash? No, thank you, Matt. And Janice did such a good job with the, the buses over the years. But, um, would, could we even say for Matt to sort of be prepared to maybe start looking at the Columbia or other like, uh, communities and how they handle it, and maybe that way, once it does come to committee, because I, I would almost foresee us needing kind of some of the, the professional background that you could maybe provide? Would it be fair to ask Matt to, to look into some of that so whenever it gets on the next committee?
I think that's something that more than likely I'd ask, uh, the new city administrator to do day one, is to start looking at that and dealing with staff and seeing exactly what we, um, can do as far as to expand transit, meet with. Uh, we currently have a focus group, if I remember correctly, as part of Transit already, uh, that we can hopefully find out, uh, what their needs and wants are and, uh, you know, keep the service obviously intact as much as we can. I think that's our overall goal. But I think the thing we have to remember, too, as we go down through this, Carrie, since you brought this up, is that, you know, we, we also have to look at the dollars we have to spend. And unfortunately, a wise man once said, "There's only so many dollars on the, on the tree," and that was our, that was our chief. But, uh, I hear what you're saying. I think Bob hears it. I think we all hear it, uh, I think it's something we want to work on as time moves forward.
Thank you. And I would just say, it doesn't have anything to do with dollars directly. I mean, really, it, it could offer some creative solutions we haven't thought about. So this is not about spending money. I want to make that clear after that comment. So there's currently a focus group. Are they meeting regularly?
Yeah.
Good, okay. So maybe we could refer some of the information from the focus group. I don't know if we'd want to bring it up at a, um, public works and planning or how we could kind of-
At this, at this point in time, we'll leave it to our new administrator when, if and when he or she comes on board and, and, uh, and go from there. But it's a topic that we haven't forgotten, but I appreciate you bringing it up tonight. Mr. Carlos?
Yeah, I do have an announcement, uh, to make. I know that, uh, also, on this Thursday night, Faith Voices, uh, will, uh, be assembling, but also on the campus of Lincoln University, uh, they will be having their annual Dr. Martin the King Junior Celebration. And it's also starts at seven P.M., so I will be trying my best to attend, uh, both events. Uh, but I want to, uh, certainly, uh, extend the invitation to you to come over to Lincoln University for the MLK celebration as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Appreciate that. Uh, any other unfinished business? Oh, Bob, go ahead.
Where is that being held?
Uh, that's going to be in, uh, Richardson Auditorium.
Yeah. Uh, any other unfinished business? Seeing none. Uh, at this point in time, under twenty-one, we'll ask for approval, or a motion to approve, uh, the closed session minutes on the January sixth and January thirteenth, uh, closed city council meetings.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to do it officially. I made a note on one of the thirteenth meeting to indicate that I was not present. I don't know if that's sufficient enough. Okay.
You were not there.
I was not there, and I want to make-
So for history, they're going to know you were not there. You could have just said, "Oh..." Where were you? Do you want to tell them where you were at? What, what desert island were you on? Okay, at this point in time, we're doing a motion. Has there been a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and approved to, uh, accept those minutes as printed, lest one small, uh, tiny detail about, uh, Councilman, uh, being off the island, so to speak. Um, with that being said, voice vote, please. All in favor, please say aye.
It's got to be a roll call.
Roll call, please. All in favor, say aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, under, uh, uh, the revised statutes of Missouri, uh, section six-ten dot zero-two-one subsection three, dealing with personnel, uh, we would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Scrivener and seconded by, uh, Prather. Discussion. Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Branch?